Well, I'll go ahead and call the Finance Committee to order. And just to make sure, Amelia, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Kevin, are you there also?
Yes, I can hear you. We can't see anything though.
Or would be Randall.
Randall?
He'd be on that Chambers Bank.
Chambers Bank? Is that Randall?
I think.
Randall, are you with us?
No, that's your chair. Or is that this chamber?
Okay, what about James?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, cool. All right, I think we got everybody that seems to be... Everybody but Randall, Herrmann and Mike. Okay. So, first item before the Finance Committee has to do with the lease agreement that we heard about, was that last week or last committee meeting?
Last committee meeting.
Yeah. A lease of the Bethel Heights Administration Building. Are you addressing that, Wyman?
Yes, we talked about it at the last committee meeting. We now have a draft resolution and a draft lease agreement.
Okay.
Who's Randall?
Should I go read it? Read what?
Resolution.
Well, we don't have to read...
Oh, that's right.
You don't have to read titles just for the new guys. I noticed that some people have been doing that. We don't have to read the title in the committee meeting.
I believe the resolution before the council for recommendation for approval.
Same.
Okay. Any other discussion concerning this resolution?
Kent's here, Wyman's here. If there are no more questions, I guess not. Kent, you don't have anything else?
All right, then we have motion and resolution, motion and second forward to council. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? All right, thanks a lot. Second item before the committee has to do with the discussion for bonus pay. Presented by Brian Powell.
Thanks, Jeff. We had some ARPA funds come in and as everybody knows, we have given a... Part of our ARPA money has gone towards our fire and police. And I'd like to bring up a discussion to committee the whole to look at providing the same for the rest of employees of the city in Springdale to exclude elected and appointed members. And the thoughts I had was $1,000 for our full-time employees. And I want to bring that up to discussion, everybody. I know that we've had, you know, we've got, I don't know how many employees we have besides the fire and police, but 170, 175, or not, maybe more than that, about 200 roughly. Thank Kobe? Yeah? Okay.
Less than what?
Less than 200.
What was the number?
Um, we think, we think it's below 200, Kevin.
You know, we look at the personnel we have. We have our administration, services, public works, building inspectors, all the way down. Our public works and I believe our parks and wrecks would be the largest employee base besides our fire and police. And with this ARPA money, if it falls in line with ARPA and is justified, I would like to propose that we do a $1,000, I guess, service.
Would that be just full-time employees, Brian?
Well, I would entertain part-time. I'm not sure about how many part-time employees we have. And I would, I would think if we did, that'd be a lesser amount, of course. But I was just thinking that are full-time employees starting this discussion off.
We'd also have to look and see when they worked. Kobe, you might go to the mic and address this so everybody can hear it. Because we, you know, we did this, we approved this for the police and fire a few weeks ago and we're having to go back and adjust some policy to make sure we're in compliance with the, with the ARPA funds. So we would need to do the same thing, I assume, with this, depending on what this ends up looking like.
Yeah, this is going to actually take a lot more time than, than what we just did with the police and fire. We're going to have to go through basically every department to justify. Through, through our DRS and BKD, we're going to have to write up resolutions for probably each different group. You're going to run into questions about, is this part-time, is this full-time? Was this hazard pay because they were exposed to the virus? Is this pay due to keeping services going from the city? You had some people working from home that weren't really exposed. And then we get into, well, did they, they take the... There was a special designation. I'm not really sure what Gina called that. It was some type of a family leave. There's just a lot, this one is going to be a watered-up knot that we're going to have to really make sure we unwind that correctly to make sure that we don't have to come back and pay for this out of the general fund. So it's just going to take time to, to make sure we do it all accurately.
I guess we could also check with Rogers. They did something more widespread, kind of like what Brian's brought up.
Yeah.
There'd be some differences, but we can look and see what they've done also.
Yeah.
That might help us, yeah.
In, in bringing this up, of course, the first and foremost, I wanted to make sure it falls within the rules and guidelines. Absolutely.
Yeah.
But I just think that we do have individuals who, even now, who are servicing the public, who are exposed to pandemic. I think it would be kind of a good, a good benefit for, for, for our folks. And so that's why I wanted to break it up for our discussion.
I think a good number for, for the council to have in your minds is we'll probably find a not to exceed price of, I would say a safe number is 250,000, just to make sure. I'd hate to say 200,000 and it'd be a little bit over that. But if you'll keep that in mind, 250,000 were probably more than safe.
You're saying 250 employees?
Sure, big $1,000.
Well, I didn't think that you were saying thousands.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, because I, I don't know the exact number tonight of who else is going to be included. Or, you know, are we going to include part-time workers? There's just a lot of questions we'll have to, we'll have to make decisions on. Whenever y'all make those decisions, that'll give me direction.
Well, how many people, did we have people working from home?
We did.
Yes.
How many?
Every department would have people for different parts of, you know, so it was really up to the individual for the most part. If someone felt like they were at risk, we, we have, well, and I don't want to get into HIPAA violations, but we did have an individual that works at the city who had underlying health conditions. And it wasn't really safe for them to be out with the public, so we allowed them to work from home. So there's just a lot of direction we'll need on exactly how you want this to work.
So how, how do you treat those people the same? They're working from home, how do you, how do you... I mean, you're saying this was basically what you're saying, this is hazard pay, right?
Let me, let me, Mike, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Brian, if you want to address that for us.
Well, the pandemic hasn't ended. We have had people who, you know, have to address the public. We still provide services for the public every day. And my other question I was going to ask is, have we had people who work for the city who have come back to work and still contracted the virus?
Yeah, we, in fact, we've, we've got a department.
Like me?
I didn't want to disclose anything.
So they were asking about workers, Mary.
So in the spirit of ARPA and what it, the spirit of what ARPA does, that fits in to, in my opinion, to all full-time employees.
I mean, let me just weigh in and I, you know, there are all kinds of different opinions on this, but I, I want to be sure everybody's clear on something. And, and this is not speaking to whether we should do this or not. I just want people to, or make sure everybody in the public knows that, that we really worked hard. I mean, I, I don't know of a single city employee that missed a paycheck through all the pandemic. And some, you know, my, my point in bringing forward the police and fire was because they're out, they were out and they had to be out directly dealing with public that they didn't know where they, where they'd been, how, whether they were exposed or not. So there was an added risk. I guess you could, and to Brian's point, I guess you could make the point that everybody had an added risk to some extent, but that was whether they worked here or whether they didn't. I mean, everybody kind of had an added risk just because of the pandemic. We did screen people that come in, came in and out of the building. We, we, we bought partitions to separate folks and help. We tried to help protect the people who couldn't work from home. We tried to make our work environment at the city as safe as possible. And I, I just wanted to make sure we had that on the record. I think it's important for everybody to know that, regardless of how you feel about, about this bonus. So I just, I just felt like I needed to make that distinction that we, we did everything we could as a city to make it as safe a work environment as possible for all those who hadn't actually come here, come to the city facilities to physically work. Everybody that could work from home or that had, that felt they were at added risk, they had underlying conditions, we worked through our IT department, through our HR department, through the department heads to make sure that we did everything we could to address those needs so that they could continue to work, serve the citizens and, and get paid. So, so to that extent, you know, we, I think we did everything we could possibly do. So I just, I just felt like we needed to make that clear.
So you mentioned hazard pay, Kobe. Do, do we have such thing or...
Well, that's, that's the approach we took with the, the police and fire. We, we approached that as hazard pay. I think if you're wanting...
What's the distinction there, though? Why, why did you approach it that way? Is it...
Well, that was one of the eligible expenses. And we felt like putting our, our police and fire that were in the public and the, the CID officers that were going out into the public, it was a hazardous situation. We'd had shutdowns from executive orders through the state. We, you know, Springdale took a major hit in some of our minority communities. So it was evident that it was real and that they were out there in the front line. So we figured that would, that would qualify as hazardous pay for those people. This...
It's one of the qualified expenses.
Well, I think part of it too, Kobe, is that there is a, there's a term called premium pay that was an allowable expense out of the regular ARPA or ARPA funds. We, if you remember right, we were going to pay this out of lost revenue. And we changed it to hazard pay because we felt it better described what, what we were, the bonuses we were giving our first responders. So, and, and it is an eligible expense. Now, we have found out that we're going to have, even out of lost revenue, we're going to have to document and, and make sure our policies are in order so that equity and, and everything has been addressed. And that's what, that's what Gina and HR is working on right now so that we can move forward with the, with the hazard pay that's already been approved.
You know, I, I don't, because of what the mayor said, we went to great lengths to try to mitigate, you know, the hazardous situation. I don't know that we approached this as a hazard pay because I don't know that that would be accurate. I think we may want to approach this as premium pay or find another avenue to pay for this out of the lost revenue, which would be simpler if we did that. I, I would probably go, if we do this, go the approach of the city employees continue the services of the city to the residents and we are an essential entity according to the federal government. So I think we could find a qualification there through that avenue. I don't know that I would use hazard pay as an avenue for this.
It's more an appreciation, a showing of appreciation for, for their continued service through the pandemic to our residents.
Kobe, would it be possible for, for you to, to take a, a look at this to give us an idea not only about the number of employees, but about the reasonable parameters that we might use for this and, and double check to see what, what we have to do to fall within the guidelines to make sure we don't fall into a, a trap that we don't anticipate for doing it. I just think we need a little clearer understanding exactly what we're talking about so that we don't have that problem.
Yeah, this one, we're going to have to tiptoe around a little more than the police and fire one. And it, it would be much better if we make sure, if, if that's the instruction of the council. Since this is a discussion tonight, I'll be happy to get a more specific number. Do we want to include part-time employees in this?
I would like to include part-time employees in this, at least get the numbers on that. You know, a lot of those part-time employees are, you know, they're hourly wage earners. And if they did contract the virus, then there was no pay for them while they were sick. And, and a lot of them lost a lot of their hours if a department was shut down or, you know, temporarily closed. So I would like for them to be included if possible.
Would you want to pay them the same amount that Brian proposed for the other positions that were full-time?
Well, I feel like their loss is greater than our full-time employees, possibly.
To really get a look and see how many employees we're talking about first before we make that kind of determination.
And we got part-time employees that worked part of that time. And, I mean, it may be more employees than our part-time positions because we may have had more employees in those positions. And how long they worked, I mean, I, I can see us getting into an equity discussion. If, if you have part-time employees that might have worked a few weeks, yeah, then that's a, that's a big difference from...
Yeah.
That, that's...
It just needs further study.
That's going to be an issue that they're probably going to tell us exactly how we have to approach that because of the equity. Since this is federal money, they're going to be very strict on how we do this. But with your guidance tonight, this will give me a good avenue to, to at least approach and see exactly what our options are, but we'll have, we'll have some good figures for you.
I, I agree with Mike in that we need more, more clarity on, on some of these issues. And I, I think it's a great idea, but just the feasibility, feasibility aspect needs to be clarified. But my, my question on this is, say, you know, say we table, well, say we bring this up next committee meeting, would that give us enough time to dispense this money before the Christmas?
No, this, there's going to, this is going to be a lot more complex than the police and fire. This is going to...
I figured.
Um, this, yeah, there, there won't be any way to have this done before then.
I figured, and, and that leads to, you know, how, how, how much of a hurry are we, if we can't get it out by Christmas, just for obvious holiday spending and whatnot? Uh, that's just a question for the council, but, um, yeah, I'd like more clarity on this.
I'm not in a, in a, in bringing this up to be in a real big hurry. I just want to be able to make sure that we've followed the guidelines that are given and that we're able to assess the wonderful employees of the city of Springdale the best we can.
That will, we could, you could kind of catch us up, whatever you can find out before the next committee meeting. And then that gets us past the budget. I mean, everybody knows, it's no secret to anyone, there's a substantial pay adjustment in the proposed budget. And maybe, maybe we can get all that behind us. That's going to be much more important than any bonus. And, and maybe we can get all that behind us and then, and then have the clarification and, and right options we need for what to do for, for a bonus for our employees.
Okay.
That sounded okay.
Yes. Yes, I would, I would like to maybe have like an option, like option A or option B, something, you know, lined out like that if possible, Kobe.
I think it'll be important to look at, at what Rogers did too and make sure our, our financial people agree with theirs. You know, that's no guarantee, but, but we want to be sure, we want to be sure that... By that, I mean the firms that we engage to determine how this stuff can be spent.
Hey, Kobe, do you happen to remember off the top of your head how much we spent on the hazard pay for police and fire?
I think we did an amount not to exceed 650,000, I believe.
But so you don't, we haven't actually pulled the money out yet?
No, we haven't, we haven't recut the checks yet.
No, and the, the reason why is they were trying to, they, because the federal government requires a lot of checkmarks on this to make sure that there's, there's equity and inclusion and, and all these other details, we had to go back and look. We, we weren't able to give more to the police than the fire. So what we have to do, there were some firemen who didn't get the full $2,000. So we had to make sure that they were caught up so that we could do the police the exact same way or we wouldn't be able to do this. So we're, we're going through those checkmarks. We're almost finished with that, though, but we will have those checks out before Christmas. But 650,000 was, I believe, the price not to exceed.
We, we figured that was on the high end and should, that's right, more than cover it.
It will.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion on this matter? All right, thank you. The third item, and I apologize that I did not bring my calendar, I forgot all about it, was to set up a budget meeting for the discussion of the 2022 budget. And is it ready?
Wyman and I discussed this morning. Did you get a chance to check with anyone in Laura? I think we had, we had, we had discussed December 3rd, is that right?
We reviewed the revenue, but we forget to review the expenses. Not been able to talk with her this morning.
Our goal was to get that to you...
Before Thanksgiving?
Within a week or, or more than a week, at least a week before that December 3rd.
Okay.
So that would be by Thanksgiving.
So generally, from what I've been hearing, everyone seems to think the one-day meeting would be worth trying it this year, seeing how that goes. Like I said, I didn't bring my calendar. I think there was a discussion of about December 3rd.
Friday, Friday, December 3rd was the, was, seemed to be the preferred date when we discussed it before. We, everybody wanted to push it. We, we talked about the, the Friday after Thanksgiving, but I think several wanted to, wanted to get past Thanksgiving week if we were going to do an all-day thing. Not going to do...
There's football available on the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so Friday, February, or Friday, December 3rd would be, you'd have, you'd have the, the budget and plenty of time, well over a week to study it. And then we would knock it, we'd meet with everybody in one day, all the departments. And then y'all could decide from there, you've got a committee meeting the following Monday. And we could decide on the 3rd what, what your next steps, where you, when you'd want to meet again.
What time to start? I said start at eight.
Eight o'clock, yeah.
So how, generally, how would we see that working?
Well, we could meet, we could meet in this room.
Would you schedule the, the order of meetings, though? I guess is what I'm asking.
Yeah, if you're, you're the finance chair, so if you want them in a certain order, let us know. But we'd get them all that day.
Try to do so many in the mornings, so many in the afternoon.
Yeah, we, we'd bring in lunch, yeah.
Okay.
So.
All right. Okay. So does anybody have any objection to December 3rd?
February 9th, Sal.
February, we could do February 9th. You're not going to beat either one of them, so...
No, that's good. Okay, so we'll just schedule it eight o'clock, December 3rd.
And, and we'll go ahead, unless we change it, and I don't see any reason to. Frank, we need to be sure the room is, if, if we decide to do it in here or we could do it in the, we could do it in the room behind if that's better. Did you? Okay.
I'm sorry, what did he say?
We have it available.
Okay, the, I think PD's been already planning on it being on the 3rd in this room. So they're ready for that if that's what y'all want to stick with.
Okay. Is this, what's the connection to PD? I'm sorry.
Well, they're...
This is their room?
Yeah, yeah, we want to be sure we're not stepping on them.
What, what other room is available?
There is another room, Frank, directly behind.
Make sure that room is available. It probably is.
It's a, it's just a big open room.
Is it a level room?
It's a level room.
Does it have tables?
It, it can have tables and chairs and... It, it might be a better setting for this. If, why don't you check on that, Frank, and we'll, we may, in fact, Jeff, we can show it to you. We can show it to the council right after this meeting.
You mind doing that with us, Frank, tonight? Okay, just so we can look at it tonight, is what I'm asking. I don't even know where you are. Thank you. All right, so we'll, we'll let everybody know which room we're going to meet in, but for sure, we're going to do that day. All right, thank you.
The last item has been pulled. The property owner came in and got their permit today from the building inspector. So that ordinance has been pulled from the engine.
Wyman? Do you have an announcement before we adjourn?
I wanted to inform the council that it's my intention to retire from the city of Springdale after 21 years, effective March 31st.
Okay. Thank you, Wyman.
Congratulations.
And I know we'll have a lot of, yeah, I know we'll have plenty of opportunity to, to say a lot more, but thank you for everything. Okay, I have nothing else. Thanks, y'all. Y'all want it. Frank, could we look in the room? Thanks, everybody on Zoom. Thanks, everybody on Zoom.